Ready to open the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four school committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call of school committee members. Michelle Kirk be present.
Kim Knight here.
Leo Brum here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Frashella here.
Alright, thank you. At this time, I would like to open public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input either here or through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment. And that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone here for public input? Is there anybody online?
Just checking hands. There's people online, but I don't see anybody.
Okay, going once? No, we're good, okay. Next up, we'll move on to the consent agenda. For our consent agenda this evening, we have the approve, the approve, the approval of the minutes, sorry. Approve and retain the minutes from the executive session on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Approval of the regular meeting minutes from September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And three different donations, three thousand from the Wheelock PTO to be deposited to the Wheelock Student Gift Account to offset grade-three field trip expenses. Six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents from the high school PTO to be deposited to the high school student activity account for the MHS Guitar Club grant. And eight hundred dollars from the high school PTO to be deposited to the high school gift account for food and beverage for the MHS staff meetings for the school year. Does anybody have any edits or corrections or anything they want removed before we vote? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
So move him second round.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Okay, next up, we're gonna start this evening with our student advisory. And tonight, I'm excited to welcome all our students. So, welcome guys. Maeve Naughton is going to be the rep to the school committee, so she'll be up at the table with us. And then we have representatives from the four classes of the high school. We're gonna make a minor adjustment to how we've done it previously, and we're actually gonna have the upperclassmen go first. So, we're gonna start off with Michael and the class of two thousand and twenty-five.
Can we, as we wait? Hello, Maeve.
Hi, Maeve.
Maeve, can you share one or two just information about you?
Sure.
I also play tennis at...
Thank you.
Welcome, Maeve. Good evening. I'm Michael. I'm the representative of the school committee for the class of two thousand and twenty-five, so I'm a senior. Just kind of an update on what we've been doing. We're starting to plan the winter dance, which is exciting for us. We also have in the works like a senior talent show that we kind of wanna bring new this year. We do have a fashion show in the spring, but we also kind of wanna do a talent show, so that's in the works. For just kind of how we seniors are doing, obviously, college applications are on our mind. There's a lot going on beginning of senior year, but I do feel that guidance is kind of supporting us in that. We had a lot of opportunities to kind of talk to our counselors, and I think that's going very well. So, we're excited about, you know, senior events, stuff like that. We had our senior sunrise at the very beginning of the school year, so I'm excited. I think our classes as well.
Alright, thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Next up, we have Tess from the class of two thousand and twenty-six.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tess Baki, and I'm the representative to the school committee representative for the class of two thousand and twenty-six and the junior class. The transition into this year was pretty smooth. It was our first year with AP classes. And I believe our teachers have been really helpful with this and assisting us in extra help and flex to make sure that we are understanding everything. And then, another thing this year that was different was the phone caddies. And it was a more strict policy. And we had it last year, but now there, it is more enforced, and the teachers are now taking attendance with the phone caddies. And I think it's definitely helping the students stay off their phone and help them work more efficiently. And then, at the beginning of this year, we also had a raincoat fundraiser, which went really well. And we're also starting to plan for prom in the spring, and so that will be a big focus for us this year.
What do you mean taking attendance with the caddies?
So, so you know how we have the phone caddy like that behind you guys? So, it's, everyone's assigned a number in our class, and so, once we get into the school, like into the class, we put our phone in our assigned spot, so they take attendance using like however many phones there are, and if there's a phone missing, they can tell if the student's missing.
And that, those are consistent with what you had last year?
Uh, yeah.
Same, it's just now, it's a mandate.
Yeah.
Doesn't slow down getting in and getting out?
No, I, I, I think it's just like, everyone kind of just forms a line, and then we haven't like enough time to get to the next class.
They stay in if you go out.
Yeah, we just sign something out on our laptop. We don't take our phones out.
Thanks, Tess.
Thanks, Tess. Alright, and representing the class of two thousand and twenty-seven, we have Charlie here tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm Charlie Werner. I'm actually the vice president for the class of two thousand and twenty-seven, the sophomore class. Our representative of the school committee couldn't be here tonight because he had soccer, so I'm just going to cover for him. For the transition into the sophomore year, I think it's been smooth for the majority of our class. People have just been adjusting into their new classes, and people have made course changes from C-one to honors, or C-one to C-two, or vice versa. They've just been going through that. As a class, we have been, we had one today actually, and are going to continue to hold open office hours for students in our grade to come in and share any suggestions, thoughts, opinions they have with us, and we will try to have one or two per term and continue those throughout the remainder of the school year. As for social events, we're looking ahead. We're looking to plan an outdoor spring activity or community building event with the class of two thousand and twenty-seven. And we were gonna aim to gather our class in a project within the Medfield community or some sort of just team, like class bonding event. For fundraising, we had a holiday raffle last year, which was really successful, so we're planning on doing that again this year. With, we collected gift cards from small businesses throughout Medfield and also added some Medfield merchandise, and that helps fund things like upcoming for prom and stuff like that. And then, we are also planning on having a Chipotle fundraiser in January or sometime in the winter to also help support our class. Overall, the transition into the new school year was smooth, and we are just going to aim to create new opportunities for our class and events to bond and look to fundraise with the support of Medfield.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
And Lily, representing the class of two thousand and twenty-eight.
Hi, my name is Lily Pan. I'm the freshman representative. We had our first government meeting last Friday, and we mainly discussed fundraising, fundraising ideas and like what items we'd like to sell. And then, the most feedback I've gotten from my peers so far is like how the transition from middle school to high school has been going. And mainly, it has been positive and like getting around school and like adjusting to the new schedule has been pretty good, and I'm excited for this year.
Great.
There are changes scheduled this year?
What's that? From middle school to high school, yeah, high school, high school, yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Lily.
Thanks, Lily.
Thank you so much, students. You guys, as I told you the other day, you're more than welcome to stay, and we would love to have you, but if you also feel like you wanted to head out, you're welcome to do that as well.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
I did, yes.
Except for you, Maeve.
Yeah, I'm sorry, she knows that. Alright, next up, we'll be turning it over to Dr. Marsden and the principals for the, our elementary school opening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as we do each year, typically in October, November, the principals come in, discuss their opening, and as, as we've done in the past couple of years, excuse me, we've included members of the site council along with the principals. So, elementary principals are up in October, and as they've done in the past, the three of them do that together, so, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Missy and Steve, I'd like to thank everyone for inviting us to tonight's meeting. And I'd like to share a little bit about the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five opening for this school year. It is my pleasure to say that the openings at all of the three elementary schools went extremely smooth. The students and staff returned refreshed, sun-kissed, and eager to start the school year. As always, we'd like to thank and recognize our office staff at each building, our tech department, custodial staff, nurses, and teaching staff, as well as the central office staff who have contributed to the opening of our schools. As we know, it does take a village, and without the combined efforts of all of these people, a smooth opening would not be possible. The enrollment at the elementary schools remains steady. At this time, there are thirty-four preschoolers, one hundred and seventy-eight kindergarteners, and one hundred and ninety-nine first graders at the Memorial School for a total of four hundred and eleven students. At Wheelock, there are one hundred and eighty-four second graders, two hundred and eight third graders, and twelve preschoolers in our one preschool class at Wheelock for a total of four hundred and four students. And at Dale Street, there are one hundred and eighty-one fourth graders, two hundred and three fifth graders for a total of three hundred and eighty-four students at the Dale Street School. That said, class sizes range between twenty-one and twenty-three students per class at the elementary level. With about two months under our belt this school year, I'm not sure how that went so fast. Things are definitely in full swing. Classes are taking field trips and engaging in learning every single day. Missy, Steve, and I would like to highlight a few initiatives that are consistent across all three of our buildings to give you an idea of some of the great things that are happening in our schools for this year. And I'm gonna pass it off to Steve, who's going to talk about our social studies pilot.
Thank you, Holly, and good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. This year, select classes in grades three through five are piloting investigating history, which is a new curriculum developed by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Investigating history is aligned with the state's standards, promotes deep innovative learning by helping students see themselves in history while understanding diverse perspectives. The program is up and running now, and what we see is it encourages critical thinking, inquiry, and also civic engagement, allowing our students to explore the U.S. in world history through the work of real historians. Data will be collected on these pilots to assess the pilot's effectiveness. We would like to recognize the efforts of our pilot teachers, because it's always challenging to take on a new curriculum like this. So, I really appreciate the pilot teachers, and I also want to thank Dr. Marsden and Dr. Power in supporting this initiative. Our next area that we are focusing on this year, I'll turn it over to Dr. Billsborough.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. So, as you know, this year, last year marked our first year of our new math curriculum, illustrative math. And typically, the second year of a curriculum brings with it a higher comfort level as everything is no longer brand-new, which is always feeling really good when it's not the, looking at everything as the new. It allows for more in-depth conversations regarding instructional strategies, pacing, and assessment, and that is exactly what is happening this year at each grade level. In collaboration with Jen Belsky, our math coordinator, teachers are working together to make adjustments based on what we learned from implementing IM for the full year last year. These conversations are occurring through common, during common planning time and also during curriculum meetings for the first half of the year. Resources are being identified as needed, and we're also working to have discussions that bring a more consistent experience for our families as children progress from Memorial to Wheelock and then on to Dale. Overall, the adoption of IM last year has been very positive, and this experience, we expect, will continue this year, and we're really looking forward to the year ahead. I also would like to give you an update on the ELA pilot that we have going on. So, as you know, we are piloting this year at elementary. There are currently eighteen teachers, K to five, involved in this year's ELA pilot. And currently, the group is implementing a program called Benchmark, and in a few weeks, we'll be moving on to our second and final pilot program called Fish Tank. The individuals who volunteered to pilot this year have participated alongside with our literacy coordinator, Jamie Callahan, to attend professional development, plan collaboratively during weekly sessions with their colleagues, provide engaging, high-quality instruction to our students, and share regularly scheduled feedback that will ultimately be used to formulate a recommendation as we move forward towards a possible curriculum adoption. We are incredibly grateful to all who are involved in this pilot. As Steve said, it's a big undertaking to, you know, learn a new curriculum while teaching all the other things that elementary teachers need to focus on, and we want to just thank them and thank Dr. Power and Dr. Marsden for their ongoing support in this valuable process. I'm gonna turn it back over to Steve for some information about supporting all students.
Thanks, Missy. One of the goals for all three elementary schools this year remains supporting the well-being of all of our students. And this year, our focus is on trauma-informed practices. To help develop effective strategies, we've created a roadmap for the year. On October thirty-first, which is Halloween, a professional development day for us, we'll hold a professional development session with clinical psychologist Dr. Nami Turk, focusing on strategies to support dysregulated students. In December, we will engage in discussions on powerful strategies and supports, which will be the focus of this year's Medfield DLD. Additionally, this topic will be a recurring agenda item on Missy, Holly, and I's staff meetings that happen monthly. And we will continue to, this discussion with all of our SEL curriculums throughout the next few months. We are grateful to Dr. Marsden, also Dr. Power and Mrs. Bruhl, as we had come to them with this initiative, and they were wholeheartedly supportive of this and asked if we needed anything, have been super helpful along the way. So, we're excited for this year to give teachers new strategies to put in their toolbox to help all students learn. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Holly.
So, as you are aware, the Medfield Public Schools is truly committed to the connection with the community organizations. Each year, the MCPE graciously provides funds for grants for each of our elementary schools. Grants include sensory walks, coding devices, water filling stations, various furniture, and two of our schools actually have book vending machines, to name a few of the grants. We also are very proud to work closely with our CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory. CPAC provides various supports to families with students who have IAPs and 504s, as well as our general education students. They provide workshops to help families navigate the IEP process, as well as provide various other speakers and workshops for parents and guardians. The pre-K eight PTO is an incredible group of supportive and dedicated parents and guardians who support the pre-K eight initiatives throughout the district. Their tireless fundraising efforts are, are able for us to support field trips, cultural arts performances, staff grants, as well as various other school events and needs throughout the school year. They are responsible for providing staff lunches and stipends to our teachers, and we are so very grateful to all of these org, incredible organizations that help support us. Another group that works very closely with each building principal is our site council, our school-based site council. Some of our members are with us here today online, and we work really hard with them, looking at school budgets, school improvement plans, and aligning the strategic plan. And we're each going to announce the members of our school council, so we'll start with our youngest, our littles, Ms., Dr. Billsborough will announce her site council.
So, at Memorial, we have three teacher representatives, one at each grade level. Sally DeGeorge is our preschool representative, Sarah Drew is our kindergarten representative, and Allison Pollak is our first grade representative. We have three parent representatives, Megan Boudreaux, Stephanie Goodwin, and Catherine Scott. And our community representative is Kathleen Farrell, and I am so grateful that many of them have continued to, to come on year after year for us from teacher perspectives and families that are rotating through Medfield, through Memorial, excuse me, come back again and again. So, we really appreciate all the work that they do.
And to piggyback off of what Missy says, oftentimes, these parents will come from Memorial and join the Wheelock Site Council, which is really great for the continuity. Our site council this year consists of a couple of new members, but also Joan Dion, who has been a steadfast member since I started at Wheelock in two thousand and nineteen, and she happens to be online, so thank you, Joan, so much for your support. Caitlin Waters is a new member to our site council. She actually is also viewing from home, so she is online as well. Marissa Kelleher, who is one of our teacher reps, and Kim Turner is another teacher rep. We have some parents. Amanda Macbeth is a parent representative, Laura Zacks, Ashley Baughman, and Jen Montone. And our community representative is Mary Beth Ready, and I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thanks, Holly, and I would continue that process. A lot of these parents just come up all through all three elementary schools. At Dale Street this year, our representatives are Lynn Nicholas, who is a parent, Kristen Martin, also a parent, Darcy Robinson, parent, Elizabeth Kelly, parent, Sarah Isaacson, classroom teacher, Kelly Buff, Kelsey Buff, rather, who is Kelsey McKenzie, classroom teacher, and Kristen Levangie. And I save the last, because right next to me, I have Tom Ramslow, who is our community representative, and I just want to thank Tom for coming out tonight. Again, he's been with us for a couple of years. It's really important to have a community member. But I will say and just give Tom all the kudos in the world, because Tom will talk in the summer multiple times. He'll come over to the school. He really wants to know what's going on. I know he's talked with Dr. Marsden, with Mrs. Bruhl as well. So, Tom does a really wonderful job. He gives a great perspective of, you know, having kids who have come through the system. Again, having some history in the school systems as well with some of his prior work. He's just been a really great person to have on the council with the other parents that I have, so I want to especially thank Tom for making it out tonight. I told him you guys might ask him a hard question, so, yeah.
I could, I could make a remark. The last time I was working in the schools was about forty years ago, and it's a dramatic change, if any of you could think back that long. And I'm really impressed with the way the Dale Street School has been running. The staff and the work that Steve does is just tremendous. So, to me, it's, it's a really high point of the day when I get to sit in on one of those meetings. And it's, it's a pleasure seeing all of you here, too.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I have one, one thank you for the update overall. So, my, my update, it's almost a bit of, I'm gonna be careful not, not brainstorming, but once in a while, we get connect, somebody reaches out to us for something's going on in the school that they don't know. And more often than not, I, I try to, one, understand, because we want to help, but two, have you already talked about it within the school? Or within a PTO, or things like site council. And that, you know, again, we want to learn, but we want to make sure if you're not hearing about it and it's not coming from there, we're, we're really not in, in the right lane. Is that, you know, generally, like, do you, do you also, when you're talking to parents, like at the PIND and whatnot? Hey, if you have topics or issues, like, you know, when a lot of people are bringing up the same things, I'm thinking it's either PTO or site council. But I just, I just love general comment on, you know, it might even be how are the two different, you know, when you're working together? And is there a best practice when, when these types of topics come up?
Tim, great question. I think, at least for Dale Street, but I think I can speak for Memorial and Wheelock. It's really neat, because our site council is sometimes part of PTO, but sometimes not, and I think we have such a great working relationship with both groups. They were always saying, as we talked last year, and we're gonna continue this year, like doing our student support series, we're really trying to get information from the parents on what they want to know or what their concerns are. So, we're asking them, we have meetings with them usually monthly between the PTO and the site council. So, really trying to gain from them, what are the discussions going on in the neighborhood? What can be, what can we be clear with? What information do we need to be better to impart out to people? So, we've been very fortunate at all three schools, talking to Missy and Holly with our PTO reps and our site council. And hopefully, we can be as transparent as possible, but we're always open to any parents, if they're not on those committees, to just reach out to us and, you know, email to try to get information if they're not clear on something.
As part of our, our agenda is for our site council meetings, each of us do have an open forum, and our goal is to get feedback from our parent membership. So, if they're hearing something on the soccer field or at the bus stop, to bring it back to us, and then we can brainstorm ways to, to improve.
I would just add that we try to schedule meetings at different times, some during the day, some in the evening, and some on Zoom, so that we can try to get the biggest population to come and talk with us, whether it's for PTO or site councils typically set after school. But, again, just really trying to get people to come and talk with us, because we can't solve problems if we don't know what those problems are.
Agreed. I mean, and that's, we, a few years ago, somebody, it wasn't as active. And that, I think, we have been saying, three legs of a stool. It's a student, it's its parents, and it's you folks, your teams. And, you know, that, to me, is a way that you want feedback. I think that, you know, for those members here or on Zoom and site council, that it's a really important role. And we, we try to work really in collaboration with Dr. Marsden here, down, down to you. But then, like, you know, when there's topics that come up, we really want to make sure you guys are the first ones to hear it. Occasionally, topics come up and they, they, people don't feel heard. Not, not, you know, it's just, you know, it's great that it comes up, but then, I, I just, I thought it was worth just, this is how I think it's working? And you folks are telling me, yeah, this is how it is working.
Can I ask some questions about the presentation? I just have three. Was there a preschool waitlist this year, and if so, how big was it?
Yes, there was a preschool waitlist, and it was pretty substantial. I don't have the exact numbers with me. But I would say for all of our sessions, there were waitlists, and there continue to be waitlists, particularly for our extended-day classes. And our morning classes tend to be more, more popular than the afternoon, just because of the age of our kids, and some are still napping, but we do have, we do have waitlists.
Okay. And then, for investigating history, we're piloting that right now, right? So, I just want to say, like, I don't have a specific question about that. We heard this as a presentation at the MASC conference last year, and it was really cool. Like, it was, like, we were sitting there, and we were like, how do we get this into our schools? So, I just want to say, I'm really, I like really excited that we're doing this right now, because it was just, it was a great presentation, and we got to do one of the activities that, that the fifth graders will be doing. I think Medway was the, Medway was the town that did the presentation and kind of talked about it. So, I think it's, I'm just really excited about it, and I think it's a really great thing for us to be doing.
Yeah, we're getting great feedback on it, Michelle, and one of the things last year that really was poignant to me was our fifth grade started dabbling on it, because it was really an open-source curriculum last year, so the state has changed that now, where fourth graders have, fourth grade teachers have to go through specific trainings. But our fifth grade have two professional development days throughout the course of the year, which are really teacher-directed. But all nine classroom teachers in fifth grade decided that they wanted to have the Mass Historical Society in, which is a vendor for the DESE in order to learn more about the curriculum, when they could have just studied something, something else. They all were unified, and they wanted to do that. And I know, like I said, Christine's been a huge support with that. She's been a great resource with us every step of the way, but it seems like it's a really, really good program. So, we're, you know, this year's our first time. The fourth grade is just dabbling in third grade, and they seem to really like it, and the trainings they're getting, they said have been top-notch, so.
Awesome. And then, the last question I have, just given that we're doing a couple of different pilots right now, can you talk a little bit about the process for selecting teachers to be a part of a pilot program?
So, it is, it is a volunteer. Sometimes, we nudge teachers if we think that they might be interested or really good at a particular content area, but it is volunteer, and we try not to have teachers overlap, because we don't want too many balls in the air. So, it's sent out usually through Christine's office, and we sort of vet our teachers and just work effortlessly to come up with who's doing the pilots. And it's usually three per grade level. It's just been the standard.
Okay. I said this last year, but I think it's worth repeating. I just want to thank you guys for everything you and your team and your staff do, and I feel that the approach in Medfield around elementary education, I, I think the three of you, and again, all your staff, do a really great, great job of balancing the academic programming with the fun that you want to have with that age group, so I just want to thank you again, because I personally continue to see it, and I just think it's, it's great. Like, it should be fun, right? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, guys.
Alright, next up, we have, I'll hand it to you, Dr. Marsden, for the summer R and D.
Sure, as we, as we've done in, in previous years, we try to highlight a few of the summer R and D programs that we do and the, some of the projects that, that we've completed over the summer. So, this year, we're gonna look at a couple. Christine is here. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine is here, and then also, we're gonna have Monique, Carrie, and Beth. And Brenda, you do part of this or not? Okay, good, awesome. Alright, so we'll do that, do that presentation with a, two really, really cool projects that happened over the summer that we think are beneficial for kids, so. Christine, want to start us off?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. It's always a pleasure to come and share the fantastic work of our Medfield educators. What they produce year after year is truly tremendous. Let me just hit show. So, our summer R and D program is relatively unique, and it's something that is really a... that is really a marquee thing for our district. It provides our teachers an opportunity to take that German idea, something that they've seen, some phenomena, some sort of thing that they know that they can really work and tweak, improve, or just grow, some sort of idea. And it gives them the time, the space, and most importantly, the opportunity to collaborate with others to make it a reality. And those collaborations happen not only within like a pair, but it could also go within department, within grade level, but also magically across grade levels, across buildings. And again, that opportunity to work in the summer is pretty tremendous. So just a little bit in terms of the overview of the process, the process actually starts in April or May, right after vacation, we send out a request for proposals. And that's sent to every single educator within the district, and that's an opportunity for them to really think about these projects that they've been thinking about all throughout the year and filling out the form, really saying about the goals and the objectives, who's going to work, and also just the amount of hours involved. From there, we take those proposals, which are aligned to the strategic plan or individual building initiatives. And what we do is we meet as a leadership team and re-review them. And the opportunity in that review is really looking at, from what our teachers are seeing, what they're looking at to dive deeply in ways that we can support them. But it's also an opportunity for us to really look at different things that may be popping up in different buildings. For instance, there may be an initiative that it starts in the high school, but there's something very similar that's going on in Memorial. And that's our opportunity to say, hey, maybe this is something as a district, it's beyond something as an individual building. So from there, the evaluation, it is evaluated by the leadership team, and we notify the participants, and then they get to work. We notify all the different participants, let them know that they're supported over the summer. I do check-ins over the summer to make sure that everything is going well. And at the end of the summer, those projects are turned in, and they're coming to my office, in which I'm assisted with Liz, pulling it all together in a central place with all those different artifacts, whether it's, it's usually its work products in terms of lesson plans, unit plans, could be reflections, could be any sort of thing, that all comes in, and we capture that and we share that out with the individual buildings. And then those projects are implemented the following school year. So that's our cycle, and it's something that we've done for a number of years, and it's been quite successful, and something that I'd love to show you a little bit of a highlight of what's going on in this past year. So this past year, we had 34 approved projects, and also 84 individual educators took part. Now, keep in mind that it's 84 individual educators, but the number of educators participating actually is larger than that because numerous, numerous times that a number of educators have participated in one or two projects. So people in two projects, it's just, there's a number of people who will participate in various different capacities. I also am really happy to say that all five schools and representatives from all five schools participated. Here is a snapshot of all the different projects that our teachers have developed, and they're tremendous. It's always a pleasure and joy to see all their different things that they've done. Everything from AI to the classroom, to working on K through three virtual libraries and everything in between, really captures just the wide variety of creative and impactful projects that happen all across this district. And it's been pretty tremendous to see in terms of the work product. Now, I wish I could highlight all of them, but unfortunately, because of time, I only have time to highlight two. So this is just two opportunities to share a little bit about what's going on and have just dig in deep in terms of what is happening with the summer R&amp;D. So I'd like to turn it over to Carrie Cowell and Monique Gudot-Troch. Can tell us a little bit about your project?
Hello.
How are you? I'm Carrie Cowell. I'm the librarian here at the high school, a lovely library. And I'm also the department chair for the K to 12 libraries.
I'm Monica Droch-Trek. I'm a French and Spanish teacher here. And this is our project.
This is our project.
So we are, we co-chair the advisory committee for this year. So I wanted, so I showed my picture of, this is my advisory. I have a senior advisory, and I love them. So I wanted you to see some of the faces.
I love mine, too.
Yeah, I know. I have seniors, so they don't mind when I do cringey things with them, as they say. So for, just to make sure for people who don't know what advisory is, it happens every day one of our eight-day schedule, so every day one during Flex A, every teacher in the building has their own advisory, and I think 15 is the most in each. Does that sound right? 14, okay. And it's basically a time to get to know these kids throughout the year, give them a safe place to land, and to try to basically just like build some community together. So we, the original idea, I did some history searching this week, was before my time. So like in 2010 is about when this started, and it's evolved, it's gone through different iterations, but basically it came from a NEASK recommendation. And then Metro West Health Survey data, one of the things that always came out was that the students at the high school felt like they didn't have, not, I mean, it was a percentage, felt like they didn't have a connection with a teacher, like one person. And so that was pretty jarring. And so that, that was kind of what's led this to evolve into what it is today, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is, that fact always sticks in the back of my mind. That's why we're doing this, because we're doing a ton of other things, and then we have this time with them to connect. And it started with having students that weren't necessarily in your classrooms. So I have a ninth grade, I do teach ninth graders this year, but typically I'll have a sophomore class because I don't teach them. So another way to connect with an adult who's not their teacher.
Right. So it, there's lots of different feedback. I actually did this last year, and basically, like, the feedback from staff and students was that they were looking for something different. And so I conned Monique into joining me this year because I, a lot of recruiting. But I love the way that she thinks through things. So I, I said, I'm good at like sending the emails and putting things together, but I need your brain.
She's really good at that. So we, so we took a lot of the ideas and the whole idea of keeping this with our core values, responsibility, inclusivity, continuous growth, and responsibility. With all that in mind, we did, and Maeve, I might pick on you in a little bit, but we, they came up with great things in years past of activities we can do to bond with these kids. But what we kind of came up with is a service, a community service project. So every time they come in on that day eight or day one in the eight-day cycle, they know that they're putting another piece to this project, they're working towards something over a 10-ish, 10, 11 flex span. So they have half a flex only to do this. So it's about 35 minutes. Let me give you some examples. So a popular one is support our troops. So right off the bat, like, bring in your Halloween candy, and you're going to send them to troops. Veterans Day is coming up, we're writing to troops. And so within that, they're emailing organizations and so forth, so developing those life skills. And that's one thing we do focus on in advisory, is like emailing adults what it looks like, how to do it. Another one we looked at was working with our daycare here in school or Memorial. What can we teach them? So again, it's 13-ish, 12, 13 kids going in there. Can we read to them, teach them a skill? We have, a popular one is cleaning up our environment around here. So plotting it, like, it's really on them to come together as that big group and plot out what they're going to do over these 10 advisories.
And they still haven't completely picked yet. So we, just like in years past, we spent a lot of the first quarter on the getting to know you, right, like the bonding things. We also really focus on the grade nine, the eighth to ninth transition. So grade nine is going to actually look a little more modified than the 10th through 12th, because that's really important, and that's feedback that we've heard. So we both are on that grade nine committee where we go to meetings and meet with the grade nine teachers and make sure we're infusing some of the executive functioning skills in throughout. So the grade nine projects might not be as big as some of the other ones. But part of the R&amp;D hours, which we're so grateful for, helped us to create like a website where everything is housed, so that way teachers have access to that, which was really important because it's, this could kind of go off the rails. We have no idea what's going to happen. Like, some people are really into it right now, and then other people need a little bit more guidance. And so the website, and just having the time over the summer to kind of like just talk this through, and some of the ideas was crucial because now we were able to kind of hit the ground running. We also, for the R&amp;D, were able to pull in some other teachers, and Brenda and Heather helped us, too. So if we didn't have that time, I feel like right now we would be probably abandoning this, right?
For sure.
Because, stay tuned, like, the whole community, we are going to be reaching out for rocks and rakes, as we're saying.
So we might be asking for, similar to people bringing in fans when it was so hot a couple of years ago, like, maybe donating rakes for the day, so that the kids can clean up around their surroundings. So Maeve, I said I was going to pick on you. Has your advisory chosen? What are you thinking? That was a good litmus test.
Yeah. So, and then trying to bring in the community. So visiting Tilden Village is another one. It's exciting to see a social media campaign for Blake. And we'll see, because we don't know, we, these are all ideas that people have given us, people don't have to pick until the end of the month. But there are so many good ideas. And, yeah, so basically, stay tuned, and we're going to be posting on the news flash for Medfield High School and the Instagram account, and we're just, we're so like excited just to try something new. And if we get to the end of the year and we have, we don't like it, we'll abandon it. But I think if kids are doing some type of social community service, it's not, nothing can be bad from it. Anything is going to be good, so hopefully. Do you have questions?
I have two questions.
Sure.
One, do you keep the kids for all four years?
No.
No?
So at one time, it did happen like that.
Yeah.
That was before I was here.
Okay.
It's so hard because there's pros and cons to every single decision that you make. But that, it did happen at one point, it's not anymore. So you get a new, and usually they try to mix up the, the grade level. So like, if I have seniors, I might, yeah.
You mentioned you had sophomore.
So that kind of like evolved.
Do the kids stay together or not?
Nope. Nope. And again, pros and cons to all of that.
But the thought behind that was meeting new kids that aren't in their classes, so oftentimes, yeah.
Well, I mean, like you said, pros and cons, right? They don't connect with this teacher, maybe next year they do.
We could go on forever.
And they have four traditions rather than one.
Yep.
It might not work. So totally, just curious.
Yeah, no, it mixes up every year.
And then my other one is, do we use these lockers in advisory the same way? Like, is attendance taken, so the kids are not on their phone in these groups?
Advisory is, yep. So Flex is the only time where they can have it.
Right.
But advisory there, that's why I have that in the library, so, yep.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
It seems like it could, if something slips through, if all teachers don't do it.
Absolutely. Yep. And I noticed that last year, so for sure, it's made a huge difference.
That's been a game changer.
Game changer.
Yeah.
So.
Cool. Quick question about that, that's only because it came up over the summer. Any evidence in use of burner phones? Or they put a fake phone?
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah.
Just curious.
I haven't noticed it, but I'm sure.
You just gave them an idea.
I know.
Oh, no, they've had the idea.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Beth Sancher is coming up. So Beth, come on up.
This is the family letters for the 612 department, English department.
Hi, I'm Beth Sancher. I'm the grade six through 12 English department chair. And we decided as a department two years ago to come up with a department kind of vision statement. So our vision statement is the Medfield English Department with literature as our foundation supports our students to be thoughtful, analytical, and open-minded world citizens. So we spent the past few years trying to figure out how we can do that. And then along came the strategic plan, and we decided to incorporate that into what it is we're doing. So we figured that we were already offering high-quality curriculum and instruction, and our goal is to foster safety, belonging, and well-being for all. So then we decided to look and see, okay, how can we further tie this in? So we decided that we would enhance communication and create partnerships between home and the school. So one thing we thought that we could do across all grade levels, and it was being done in various ways, but it wasn't being done consistently by all teachers, was to foster more of a collaborative learning environment where each grade level has a letter that is sent home either once a term, once a quarter, detailing what it is that is going to be read, that's in that unit. And it gives important information, maybe some content warnings. We're looking to increase transparency. And we're also looking to kind of let parents know what their students are reading. I have two students myself. My one will come home and tell me everything about today that happened, and my other will be like, it was fine. So I'm always like, what did you read today? Books. So this is good for, you know, students who might not be as willing to share information. So we had some letters that we already had at the high school that I had everybody drop their letters in, so we could kind of see a structure and a model of that. And then, what I then did is I asked the grades six, seven, and eighth teachers if they would be willing to do this R&amp;D. And, you know, I met with Nat and Christine to see if this was something we could do. And then, over the summer, then each ELA team met and wrote up these letters, one per term detailing what the stories are going to be about, maybe some content warnings, and just generally like things you can talk about with your students at home. And we're also offering, if parents want a copy of the book to read along, we're more than welcome to let them borrow a copy. So more people read in, the better, so. Okay? Any questions? All righty then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
So just, just to wrap up, I really wanted to thank the teachers across the district who participate in this. This is really a wonderful thing that's been going on year for, year after year after year after year. And you can see from this, just the, the work products and what they produce really impacts the district in a really positive way. I also want to thank the ongoing support from the school committee, as well as Dr. Morrison and this work. It's just a really incredible thing to have an opportunity for teachers to really take that, that idea that they have, that opportunity, that, the things that they're thinking about and really using the summer to really dive in deeply in order to get, just to work to support our students. So we really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine.
One question, and I'm guessing, I love the slide that shows all the projects.
Yeah.
I think it really captures what we're doing. So I don't expect, you know, every detail to, it was the health survey data guy, the data kind of.
Yeah.
What, what was, do you have any color on?
Yeah, so the, that's the Midwest survey that is issued. Data came back, and as an opportunity, we had two people investigate and really analyze that over the summer, and that's Russ Becker, as well as Stephen Marks, Law's department chair. And together, they, they came up and really saw in terms of the findings of that. I'm not, it's something I think they should be able to present, and they should, but that's actually represents their work. And that opportunity, again, that's again, two folks that really have an opportunity to work deeply on a specific project that would more be challenging during just the hecticness of the school day.
That's great. Yeah, and I think typically during the year.
Yeah, I would think, yeah.
It'll be a presentation late winter, early spring this year, once we go through it.
It looks, I mean, great, just the projects.
I'm blown away, year after year.
Great stuff.
Really great.
And it's like a huge thank you to all the teachers who do it, because it's, right, it's like the summer, right?
Yes.
It's your break as well, so it's just nice, I think, as a parent, to see how much, you know, you all care and are thinking about stuff outside of your normal day that relates to the kids you're teaching. And I just had a question, so I know it said 34 were approved. Do you usually approve everyone, or is it?
Pretty much everyone gets approved. And that's that massaging that happens is sometimes we match people. Sometimes we say, well, you can post.
Sort of ideas.
Yeah, we try to approve every single one of them. Absolutely.
It's the hours that get changed.
Yeah.
So sometimes people estimate it's going to take 16 hours and we can only really afford eight hours for that project, that kind of thing. So we kind of go through that at that level to figure out the amount of hours.
The other one I'd love to know about, not now, but, um, just because we had the senior project at the end of last year. Come and sort of give examples. And on here it says senior project restructure. I think it would be great when like senior projects kick off in the spring to sort of understand what that like, I guess, looks like for the seniors this year and how it might be different.
Yeah, I know the work's been great on that. It's something that I, I feel that they could definitely represent.
Yep.
And also just one comment. I love the enthusiasm that the presenter's, you can see that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's, it's genuine and it's appreciated.
Yep.
Uh, my question or ask Christine would be about the dissemination of this. So I know teachers do it and they're like kind of small teams.
Right.
Um, and I know it would be a huge challenge, right? To then go talk to the other teachers with everything you've learned because it's like such valuable time. You put all this work on it. So I guess my, I know we can't go through all of them, but like an ass maybe for like next year on this slide would be like, when are the teachers that do the work in the summer allowed the time to then spread that knowledge to everybody else?
Yeah.
So that's just something I, I'd, uh, like ask or put on people's plate. Cause it's like, I know it's two or three or four, 10 teachers do all this work. And then like, when do we have time besides like at lunch to tell everybody else how to do it? So I just, um, that'd be something I'd ask for like in the future to like add a slide or a step five on like, and we know on this PD, this is stuff's going to go because it's, it's so good, so much good stuff and so much hard work by the teachers. But that last step of like, how do we spread it to everybody? Um, I think it's hard. I, I think it's hard to do in a school. So I just ask to like, um, for everybody, for us, but for the teachers to like, know they will get the time to present everything they learned and, and then to show us that it happened.
That's an important, I agree. That's an important step in the process. We capture every single, as I mentioned, artifacts from each, it's all in a single spreadsheet. And that's pushed out to the, the building principals themselves. And then at that point is trying to get that to, to spread because in many cases it is going to impact more. If something is done, for instance, within a grade, you know, a specific grade that might be applicable across the school. It's really important to get that information out, but to share that information for sure. I can definitely do that in the future.
The advisory council to stand up. That's awesome.
And yeah, I, and to build up, and to build up then, how do you pray? I mean, so, cause some of those areas are, you know, may have impacted more and may be more important. And it, you can't expect the teachers, oh, there's five new things that we did this summer. I'm going to implement them all, right? And that's not a reality. So, um, you know, and then to have that great thing hit all the classrooms, right? So that every student can benefit. So I, I echo that around the dissemination plan. And, you know, and is there, you know, but how, how are they choosing which ones to disseminate across the grade level?
So we have the faculty meetings. We have common planning time. We have department meetings. We have curriculum meetings, the elementary. So there's, there's a lot of time that we have to do that. So.
Just like if you go to a conference, you have to say how it's going to be. So even though some like the whole school might not be, it might not be for that.
Yeah, part of the grant writing. I just want to make sure you all get the time to do it. Cause it's hard. That time gets filled in a hurry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming. Yeah, great.
All right. Next up is the budget calendar.
Let Michael do that.
Sure.
So Michael will be reviewing the budget calendar. This does usually require a vote from the school committee. Uh, if we need to adjust sometimes, we can certainly do that. But, um, this is the timeline based on what we've done in the past and also Michael's conversations, uh, with the warrant committee chair recently. So.
So every year we present our, um, budget calendar. This year will be the fiscal year 26 budget calendar. Um, I did speak to the chair of the warrant committee for some dates, um, that, um, are attached here to the budget calendar. So October 8th, uh, the warrant committee started to discuss their budget guidelines. That was a couple of days ago. Um, obviously tonight would be the adoption of the budget calendar. Uh, for the month, usually for the beginning month of November, November 1st or the 15th. Uh, the superintendent and myself, we meet with, um, the leadership team, the department chairs, uh, to review the operational and the capital budgets. We actually started doing a little bit of that at our last, uh, leadership, uh, meeting. Um, and then, uh, November 18th, um, the preliminary budget, um, is basically, um, presented to myself and the superintendent, um, November 19th through December 2nd. The superintendent and myself, um, will sit down with, uh, the principals, department chairs, uh, to identify staffing needs and operational expenses. Uh, and those are all individual meetings. Um, I think last year, Jeff, do you recall? It's about 20 something meetings?
Uh, 22.
22 meetings last year. And then December 10th would be the annual budget meeting, um, which will be a joint meeting between, uh, the select board, uh, the warrant committee and the school committee. At that meeting, the final guidelines from the warrant committee will be presented. On December 12th, uh, the school committee will review the preliminary fiscal year 26 budget, um, that the superintendent will present. And that's, uh, the just, uh, the beginning stages. On January 9th, the school committee continues to review the preliminary fiscal year 26 budget. And then on January 30th, there would be the public hearing that we do every year, uh, for the, uh, operational and the capital budget. The school committee, uh, would vote, uh, to transfer the fiscal year 16 budget from the superintendent's budget to the, uh, school committee budget. And that's will be the first time that it becomes the official school committee budget on that date, uh, if there's a vote. Uh, and then on the 31st, we're required to submit our fiscal year 26 budget, the school committee budget, uh, to the select board and the warrant committee. Um, and then from between February and March, um, February 11th, the, a meeting, uh, with the warrant committee. Which will be an ongoing, uh, public input from that point on, um, from February all the way through, um, May 5th, which is the annual town meeting. Any questions?
Michael, that February 11th meeting, that's the one that Steve had penciled, penciled us in for on the schedule.
That's when we would be going in front of. Correct. And, and that's just penciled in right now.
Right.
They could be, you know, shifting, going around.
Do you guys have any questions on the budget calendar?
Okay.
Is there any public comment on the calendar before we take a vote? Chris?
Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. Um, on the, um, budget calendar, you know, I just remember from the strategic plan, um, sessions. And the, the various public forums that took place, the consultants really noticed, noted the importance of setting, um, school committee and superintendent goals, um, before proceeding with the budget process. And that really hasn't taken, that those steps haven't been taken yet. And I would think that, that the, the goals and the priorities that are set by the school committee are going to be basically guiding further discussions that happen with, um, you know, the leadership team, with the department heads as they talk through. I mean, they, they need guidance on what their priorities should be, um, as part of the budgeting process. And that's not reflected on this calendar at all, and it should be. There's a, there's the, the goal setting piece that's missing from this that, that really should be part of this. And that was really, that's, that came from the strategic planning consultants and, but it's also common sense, at least to me.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
One more time on, uh, just checking on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you guys ready to vote?
Motion to approve the budget calendar for the FY 26 budget cycle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right. The motion carries. Okay. Next up we have, um, superintendent evaluation. So what we're going to be talking about tonight is, um, we're going to be starting the superintendent evaluation. Tonight we'll be talking about high level process and timeline. Um, so this is a norm part of the school committee responsibility. We conduct the superintendent evaluation. It's a pretty structured process through DESI. Um, in the next couple of weeks, I'll get you the materials you'll need to complete the evaluation. If you look at our school committee meeting dates, Tim and I had kind of sat and looked. And it seemed to make sense to have the summary, or sorry, the evaluations from each member, uh, submitted to me by our December meeting. So two kind of months-ish. And then, uh, that would give me time, uh, to get it together for January. So one of our January meetings is when we would be kind of discussing it. Yeah. Any questions about that or Tim or Leo, do you guys have anything to add as members have done this before?
No, I think, you know, just reflection on the work we've done based on since you, the time you were here. If there are questions based, um, some previous members didn't feel comfortable in commenting on all of it because they were not here for the whole time. So either, you know, address one of your fellow members on the board for, for any type of guidance on some of that. And don't be afraid to be open and honest, I guess.
I will say too, I've reached out to MASC, um, they, to see if they would come speak to us, uh, as I understand as they had done previously. They've had a, uh.
A slew of retirements.
Retirements. Yeah. So they're busy getting their new field directors up to speed. But the webinar I shared along with the slide deck is kind of what they would, uh, be giving us. So that's a good point of reference and DESI has some stuff as well. So. Any additional questions on that? No?
It sounds good. Healthy process. Generally it's a two-year cycle. It's already caught up to us again.
Other items since posting on October 8th?
I have none, Madam Chair.
Um, okay. We're moving on to old business. Um, we'll be discussing the school start times. So I guess what I'd like to start with is, uh, Will and Diana, if you wouldn't mind walking us through kind of a little background on the process in place with the school start time committee, kind of how we got to this point.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So I believe right before I came on the school committee was when it first started being talked about. Is that do we want to consider moving school start times for both middle and high school and then our elementary, um, schools? So December, January timeframe, a committee was put together to work on school start times. So that consisted of administrators, teachers from every school, uh, two members from the school committee, Will and myself. And then we also asked for parent volunteers. So we ended up with about 24 people, um, on the committee. We kicked off our first meeting in February and, um, we proceeded to have four meetings, I believe, since then. And really it was to talk about, um, really should we move, you know, the start times of our school? You know, everyone coming in had different opinions. Um, so we heard from, which was great, was Hannah Gardner volunteered her time, who is a doctor who focuses on, um, sleep and the impact on adolescents. So she was able to share sort of the science behind why our middle school and high school students sort of need sleep and the way their body clock works and, and, um, when they're able to fall asleep. And then we also heard, you know, from different people who changing school times would, um, you know, impact. So we heard from Eric Scott about what that looks like for athletics and after school activities. We heard from Michael talked about the buses and, you know, if we move the buses, what did the bus company say? Like how long do we need between like the school starting? In addition to those meetings, we also sent out a survey to, um, all parents in the district. And we ended up with over 1,200 responses, which was a, a great response rate. And overwhelmingly the feedback, um, from the survey was that parents, um, were supportive of moving high school and middle school to actually start before the elementary schools. And one of the reasons was that, one of the questions asked was, you know, would it be helpful, you know, to have your older student home to be able to help your child get on the bus and vice versa? Would it be more helpful to have them in the afternoon? And percentage of parents said it would be more helpful to have their older students actually home in the morning to help put their younger students on the bus first, first in the afternoon. And then we also surveyed the eighth through 12th graders too, to get like student input. So they were able to, um, provide information. And what was asked of the committee was to provide three different recommendations to Dr. Marston. So he could look at those and then bring them back to the teachers union. And in addition to that, on June 8th, we did hold a, um, I believe it was June 8th, a public forum where anyone could come. That was a parent in the community to ask about it. We had a few people show up. Again, the only people who showed up were again in favor and sort of just wanted to support that they would, um, like to see this, this change. So that's where we've ended. So although I know, you know, I just want to make sure people know it wasn't just a, you know, spur of the moment decision. It's really been talked about and worked on for almost a year at this point. And I'm very excited to actually get to the point where, where we're going to potentially, um, vote on it. And the other thing that, you know, we considered in this decision too was other towns in our area and in our sort of, are we in the tri-valley league?
Yes.
Tri-valley league, again, not a huge sports family. So tri-valley league. But again, the majority of schools in the tri-valley league have already gone this way. So even for like sports and after school activities like that, we'd actually just be aligning to what most other schools are doing. Whereas we were sort of an outlier right now. So that's where, that's where I think we came to the, the recommendation. And now I know that, you know, um, Dr. Marston's come back with a recommendation based on working with the teachers union.
And the bus company.
And the bus company, yes.
Right, right.
Question, Ed, how, what was the makeup, parent makeup, um, on the committee? Did we have good representation?
We did. I should have said that. Yes. We had parents who had children in all, um, elementary, middle school and high schools. And then parents who also had kids who hadn't even got to the schools yet. So we had good variety.
And every parent that volunteered was on the committee?
Yes.
We accepted everybody.
Like we accepted everyone to do it. So.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyone who wanted to have a voice and participate was able to, which I thought was great.
Some of the feedback and some of the heard and that they've started up soliciting feedback to you a little bit too social, um, only because I find six loving, grateful years here on the committee. I know that even with all the homework we've done, um, there will always, people don't feel like they had to want to add input. But in the last couple of weeks, um, uh, you know, I've heard things about, uh, with sports, will there be the need for students to leave high school early, uh, leave school early, uh, on any given day because they have to go in a way game? Like will they have to leave last period or something along that lines? And has there been consideration around, um, I heard one school, um, moved, um, one of their flex type blocks to last period or something like those lines, uh, or something like that.
Yeah, DS does that.
DS does every day their flex is last year.
Uh, and I think that's who it was.
I don't, I don't have an answer to that question. But, but I did want to, yeah, I did want to make sure know on the times, like what we did try to be considerate of is that, you know, we, we wanted to make sure the elementary school time, right? You're seeing that it's actually going to change, um, from like they normally start at eight 25, they're starting at eight. So we did take into consideration, we don't want our elementary school students like standing outside in the dark. So we looked at, right? So like that 25 minutes we were hoping wasn't actually so impactful. And on the flip side, for the older kids, when we did talk about start times for them, right? So their current start time is 7:40, moving it to 8:35, we had a lot of discussion about, you know, should we just move it 20 minutes to like have them still get out earlier? And really the science behind the sleep is that, that doesn't make a difference. Like the 20 minutes wasn't going to actually like help with the problems that like not enough sleep causes. So we were really trying to get them to like almost an hour, which would give you like, like hypothetically almost five hours extra of sleep a week, which is huge because like the science also shows like regardless of what time they need to wake up, they're still going to want to fall asleep around the same time. So, um, but again, I don't know about, you know, when we talked to Eric and he came in and talked, uh, the athletic director, because so many other schools are doing it, like that wasn't one of the concerns. People leaving to. because so many other schools are doing it, like that wasn't one of the concerns of people leaving to school late. It was more about playing in the dark.
Definitely would happen sometimes.
It will happen sometimes and nine of the 12 schools already do it. So the game times have already been shifted better. But like long games, like the golf day turn, you know, the kids get, still get dismissed for things as school goes on.
And like from my perspective right now with a, you know, a daughter in the seventh grade for middle school, like they're waiting around almost an hour every day for any games to start because of like, we're waiting for the other schools to get there. So like, right? Should we get out at, I don't know, two oh seven, two ten and like their game can't start till three forty-five or four anyway, because we're waiting for the other schools to be able to get here.
I've done a, I've done about a six-week study with my sixth grader who was, used to be up right away. Cause now timing the bus, it's only seven oh two and the bus comes at seven oh three, you know, kind of thing. But yeah, that's what I'm asking in general, just for the public as well. Because it is a big change, I think.
Yes, it's a big change.
And then more importantly, I know unfortunately you won't be able to take advantage of this, May, but would you appreciate it an extra 55 minutes in the morning?
So that was kind of the committee. Then again, thank you to the committee and everybody who's involved in this space. So then, Dr. Marston, you were able to take the times to the teachers' union. Do you want to talk to us a little about?
Sure. So some, just some background, about four years ago in our last contract negotiations with Unit A and the teachers, one of the agreements we had was that during the duration of this current contract, which is a three, a one-year plus a three-year contract, that we would be looking at and moving toward changing the start times in the school. So that was an agreed-upon concept that we were going to explore in the last negotiation. It's almost four years ago now at that point. So there was union representation on the committee that Diane and Will were on, Diana and Will were on. And they came up with three great, we thought, three great recommendations out of that committee. So on September 16th, we started meeting with a group of teachers that were, every teacher was asked to volunteer on the committee and it was a group of about 10 teachers or so that, that met for the next, you know, three or four Mondays in a row, kind of going through some of these issues and, and trying to see, you know, how can we structure the day? What can we do? That kind of thing. Cause I think initially it's, how's it going to impact me, right? Now my, I've worked at this time for 20 years. Now my time is going to change. How's it going to impact me? And that's, I think, a normal human reaction to anyone. If, if something's going to change like that. So kind of worked through those conversations and what that looked like. Got to the, the proposed numbers after the second meeting, looking at Medfield High School and Blake Middle. The students starting at eight thirty-five and ending at three ten. We had to then work a couple of meetings to get the teacher workday in because the student day would be six hours and 35 minutes and the teacher day would be seven hours and 15 minutes. So to kind of see what that looks like because currently now there's, it is time before the student day and there's time after the student day. And how could we make that work for, for teachers? Because I think they were, they felt pretty strongly that if they, if the kids were going to start at eight thirty-five, they still wanted to come in early. So the bulk of their workday was happening before the kids came in instead of after the kids left, which was something that we had no problem with. It made sense. That's, that's how they, that's how they want to structure their workday. So things like faculty meetings that start, that start in the afternoon now, that go beyond their workday would start earlier than their workday in the morning, say seven thirty and continue to, you know, eight twenty-five before kids come in instead of on the other end. So they felt pretty strongly about coming in earlier and not staying as late, which we had really no issue with at all. We thought that was a really good solution to trying to figure out what that teacher workday was going to look like.
I see there was a change, one of the revisions, I thought they had a Friday exception.
It does, yeah. So, you know, the, because right now in the teacher contract, teachers can leave early on Fridays. What, what they wanted to do was instead of doing that, come in late on Fridays, which made perfect sense. So that was something that, again, no issue on our side as far as, you know, the operational piece. It made a lot of sense for them to structure their workday that way. So that was what we're going to, you know, what we're going to look at doing. The high school has a really neat schedule now where it's a flex schedule where kids get a lot of support during the day if they want it. So that we looked at some of the data and it wasn't a lot of kids. One of the issues that, that brought flex in was that we had so many kids participating in after-school activities that they weren't really, didn't have time to stay after school for extra help. So that's what flex kind of levels the playing field on that, where kids can get that support during the school day and not have to come before school or say after school and miss whatever activities are in. So now we're looking at revamping the middle school schedule so that it may incorporate some of the aspects of the high school schedule so that, that, that support that kids get during the school day at the high school can happen at the middle school as well. So that's one of the things that the middle school is working on from now until next year. And there'll be, you know, the, the hope is there's a new schedule, a new structure in the middle school next year for that schedule. Elementary was really a change of only 25 minutes in the morning. Going from eight twenty-five to eight o'clock and then ending a little bit earlier, 15 minutes earlier. So it wasn't a huge change for them. And then they worked their, their, their teacher workday around that schedule. Again, trying to put a little bit more in the morning ahead of time. So the meetings and any meetings they have or anything they need to do in the morning happens before the kids come out. So they, they were very satisfied with this, you know, four, four meetings, four really good meetings, thoughtful meetings of how we can make this happen. And I just, you know, want to thank the professionals that took the time after school, four days to kind of work this out and, and really their, their teacher leadership here was phenomenal and getting to where we need to go to make this happen. So.
And I was, I was curious as to, was there a survey or the kind of feedback from the teachers? Cause I know, I think with three, were the three possible proposals?
There was.
Yep.
So there was a survey, the, the teachers initially and then in between our third and fourth meeting, the teachers' union sent out something to all the representatives and said, this is what we're thinking. Is there anything that we need to consider before Jeff brings it to school committee? Like what, what do we, you know, what are we missing? So we got about nine responses out of that. We went through those this week. Many of them were mostly operational kind of things, not really anything to do with this. Like what about the, if I'm teaching at the middle school and the staff meeting at the high school starts at this time, I have time to get there? Like those are things that we just, okay, you leave five minutes early to get there. Like it's not a big deal, you know, those kinds of things that we do. So most of them were around that, you know, those kinds of issues that, you know, it's just, and I think one of the things that we were committed to during this whole process was to give folks, both teachers and staff and parents, you know, eight, 10 months to kind of work this out, right? We weren't going to just drop it on them last year. Like, you know, and just say, September is what we're doing. No, we wanted to, to really think through this and make sure that it works for people and that they have time to change their own schedules. I mean, it's, it's, it, people figure it out and they, and they will figure it out, whatever the change may be, they, they will. You know, there's all these things that we have to do now, like we have to make sure that we have additional childcare in the morning at our schools. We need to look at expanding the before-school care that we do at the elementaries to the middle school right now for next year. Like those are the kinds of things that we do. Still have a late bus, make sure we do all that. But all those kinds of things, you know, work with MAP to make sure we give them more space because they're going to need more space. Those are all the things that, you know, what we're going to do in the next 10 months to make sure this works.
So yes, my thought is I see that we have potential vote there. It feels like where we came from as we narrowed it down to three start times. We now have it down to one. I guess in the spirit of what Jeff was able to do with the teachers and just understand that this is probably what we're going with, but give ourselves till November to vote on it and see if there's anything glaring that we missed. And allow the public to kind of be in that space to get any questions or concerns answered. So that when we vote on this, we are in a place of making sure we're moving as forward as possible with this being what we're doing. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a really big change. And that's why, you know, being thoughtful to make sure we hear all the concerns. And, you know, I know you've done it, both of you, thank you, and Dr. Marston, getting all those people together. I think it's extremely important to get all that feedback and, you know, and get that, those people heard because it is, it's a lot of change. It's a big change.
It is. And I would just remind people that we're not trailblazers here. I mean, this isn't something, this is something we should have done a long, long time ago. And, and if, if all the communities around us can figure it out, Medfield can too.
Yep. And I think it's now that we have these times, because I think there was, you know, false information again being spread today about start times and, right? So I think it's important to just, now that we have these times, that people are able to look at them. You know, if they have questions, they can ask and then, you know, take the vote. Cause I still think even today, right? People maybe weren't sure what the times were going to be. So I think having this out there for a little bit is good before we vote. Even though I'm ready to vote. For listening to comments, I get that, but I think Will and I are like, we've had lots of conversations.
I hear you guys. I hear you guys. But again, I think at the end of the day, we are saying like, this is, we're like in a 90% place right now that these are the times for next year's school year. But if, if someone somewhere missed something glaring, we're going to give them a couple more weeks to let us know what that looks like.
I was gonna say, I was, busing, you know, Mike is, you know, which is always going to be, anything majorly, major impact, traffic pattern wise or anything like that, that we might possibly run into. I, we've pretty much just flopped them, right? Almost.
Not, not really, but.
It's, does it cost us more?
No.
Would it cost us more?
No. It won't cost us any more.
You know, my comments, one, I love where we landed, we're gaining an hour.
Yeah.
Fifty-five minutes.
Right.
Maybe. Don't keep studying. Don't stay back. But I think, I think that's fantastic. And what, what, just one thing that I, I agree procedurally, this has been a top-notch process and I think it's appropriate to wait till one more meeting just to allow the public to come back to us. I, I would, this is not normal, but if there's been one or two comments in the chat, we don't normally respond to those. But if you wanted to take a quick public input on this.
It can be read.
You can read it out loud?
Where's kids if that, if that's. Just that it is worthwhile.
And, and I do want to, I want to mention that with all the respect to our colleagues as well, I completely get it, trying to get it across the finish line. And land, land the plane, whatever the latest, you know, is.
No, and I, I do think it's good.
Completely understand.
Since people still, right? There are people who missed it over the last nine months. So this gives them a chance to process it.
There are people that missed it over the last nine months. Sure. If you missed it, you missed it.
Okay. Do you want to read the comments?
Yeah, sure. Just, just in, in that's, that's what I'm saying. And we will before we vote. Are there any additional after-care opportunities for the elementary kids? Spots are already so tight. I think we already said that.
Yeah. So we'll, we've, we, we added additional space for MAP this year because they were telling, we'll do it again next year. You know, they'll hire some staff and then, you know, we'll be able to support them if we need to have additional, you know, programs. If we need to do something and, and if MAP can't handle it and, you know, we need to have our own program there, we could, you know, do that as well. But I think we're going to work, we've always worked great with them. So that's not going to be an issue. We recognize that's going to be a change.
I ran to an ad at Medfield Day and mentioned that they were very appreciative of the communications, you know, from schools and pepping for this too.
Yeah, oh yeah. This isn't a surprise to them.
And the good news is it's 15 minutes for the elementary schools. It's, it's very, right? I can see the middle school and the high school do add like an hour, like the younger kids are really only 15 minutes. So hopefully not that.
So that, you know, one of the things we looked at, and Diana mentioned it earlier about the darkness. So community right next to us did this last year and then they put their elementary later, starting at nine to nine oh five. And when we looked at that, you know, that would have put our kids getting off the bus in the dark for a good portion of the year. You know, we didn't think that was a great idea for us. You know, you know, it could work other places, but we didn't think it was good for us to do that. You know, I think, I think all the, all these things that came up, we really tried to think of and, and wanted to make sure that kids were safe and, and the best possible day. The other piece that, unless you didn't, if you didn't do the math here, it's also eight minutes a day more for kids. So it's over a thousand minutes more instruction or, you know, I, I, at my advisory yesterday, parents mentioned to me what, maybe for the younger kids, you do four minutes of extra recess and four minutes of extra lunch or eight minutes of recess. Like you use that time to that instead of instruction, which I think is a great idea, you know? So we have four, we have eight minutes a day more in every school day as a result of this, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it adds up.
The only other comment someone had was similar to what I was about to say, just my older kids are helping us.
Yeah.
Stuff like those are things that administrations.
Sure.
There's no, unfortunately, there's no perfect solution. I think that's. A hundred percent of everyone's. They're going to have to take on. This is great.
Good.
With the chair, I would wonder if we open up public comment just on the subject for people who are on Zoom or here, just to even know.
I think I would rather, people are welcome to email us and let us know or talk to us individually. I don't think we need to do that right now, going outside of our own policy. So.
There's not a lot more, but I'm just seeing.
I agree.
Okay. So next up, anything else on this? Okay. Next up, we have the SBC update. We met last night. Leo, do you want to walk us through it?
So the SBC is progressing well in our process. We've, we had a table at Medfield Day. The communications committee is doing a great job. We're trying to get the word out about the project. They had quite a turnout that was reported to us last night at the, at Medfield Day. And then we opened up also tours of the building for the community to go and see the concurrent conditions of, of the building and ask questions, go see some of the latest damage to the building. There's a lot of interest in that. To see the, to see what the, the reining in and the old modulators that we have. So I think it was a good example of that the school is at a critical need to have some things addressed within the building. Of some sort of decision to be made. And then during last night's meeting was the update on our communications to MSBA. Some further conversation on options around SBA generated by questions from the community. And then some strategy is going to be taken to try to garner a better communication system to have further reach to the community through social channels and email using constant contact, which was voted on. So there will be some communication to try to generate additional people to join that contact, that particular communication on anything having to do with the community. I urge people who are, you know, want to make sure that they're in the loop to join that communication loop, you know, from constant contact. So when you see it from us, it'll, communications from us, it will automatically ask you to add yourself to the list. Someone, someone forwards it to you, you can add yourself and it will also push on our social channels as well for the SBC.
And then I was going to send something out. Once you, you guys are all set with that, I'll send it out to all parents because we can get it out to 2,700 emails really quickly. So.
Correct.
That would be great.
How many, oh, sorry. How many people signed up to do a tour? Did people actually come and?
We had 15.
Yeah. And the first one was the most popular. The other one, we had three.
We had three, but we've actually postponed that one and changed the date to the October 22nd at four. So we did have one scheduled during the school day at one thirty, but we postponed that and made it at four o'clock on the 22nd.
And then the last part is going to be, there will be a vote on site selection from the committee. Probably at the next meeting. So, which is currently leaning towards the Dale Street location based on rank choice voting through our surveys and the 1,100 and 1,200 folks who responded to our survey. And that will help, you know, be able to get that decision out of the way before, you know, engaging whether with or without MSBA. So the, probably the biggest piece around is just how much is around the finances. And the process to which we come, you know, go through the feasibility study again to figure out what the cost of renovation and whatnot is going to happen with or without, with or without MSBA assistance. Of course, MSBA assistance for us with the price of the, you know, it could be, you know, anywhere from 20 to 25 million in support. So that is a large consideration to take, you know, to think about. So, and then Dr. Marston and his team have done a job of keeping MSBA up to date on the activities that we've engaged in so that they're aware that we are actively engaged as a community in the process here. And trying to garner and maintain support for a project. And, um, trying to garner and maintain support for a project, so that they will consider us, uh, for the program again. We will find out this coming year, uh, whether or not we make the cut in late November, early December, is that sound right? So.
Yeah, I think so. Do you have anything else?
There's been some numbers that have come out recently for, for high schools. Lexington is looking at, um, seven hundred and fifty million for a high school.
Seven hundred and fifty?
Almost a billion dollars for a high school. I know that North Attleboro, I mean, closer to us, North Attleboro is announcing at their meeting tonight that their plan is about two ninety for a high school, so. You see, it's been a huge increase in cost for construction school, obviously, hi- high school's a lot more expensive than elementary school.
Right.
But definitely been an increase.
But also those, um, those projects compete against us for the pool of dollars that are made available on the year of MSBA, so that's one hundred and fifty seems a little excessive to me.
Seems a little bit much.
The, what did you say, um, MSBA communications?
So, uh, Dr. Marston, you wanna talk a little bit about?
Yeah, just sending them an email, let it, give them the updates, you know, you were part of that, yeah, we were doing that, yeah. And, and we sent, I sent them another one, um, recently about the Dale Street, that we had to close the classroom and that kind of thing, just to kinda keep them updated on that as well.
Did you send the video?
I didn't send the video, no.
The video of water flowing in that Dr. Marston has, uh, through the wall. Waterfall feature.
I think that, um, I was thrilled, um, when I saw that they're voting on site selection. It's, you know, I think the, the one I remember at, uh, MASC event last November, I went to, uh, one of their basically sessions, like if you're thinking about using us, would, would, does it work? But community readiness is such an important driver.
Sure is.
You know, one is, is there need, we know we have need.
And they know we have need.
Is, you know, I think from the last year with the votes, we're starting to see the community is demonstrating their appetite, you know, aid for funding that, that we've, we've got for, cause we're gonna have to fund the feasibility, but second, some of the tax.
Yeah.
It is absolutely fantastic, and I, I, I think that's brilliant, to, as, as close as we can to vote. Obviously, if there's a whole bunch of spewed as to where, what the location would be, you know, I'm sure you, you would make the right, you know, you would.
Yep, well, the upside to.
Bring that up, but, but yeah, I mean, just point of being, if we even get that vote, that's another demonstration of community readiness, and I'm in sales when I'm not here. Only so many schools are gonna get the.
Right, right.
Right, so we wanna really demonstrate as, as best we can, we're eager. We can cross the other bridge if we, if we don't, or that. Awful lot of funding and resources that could be able to help us.
Well, I think one of the things that the previous project does provide us is a lot of data that can be used, and they know that, so that data can steer the decision under being made, and.
Okay, thank you, guys. Next up, moving on to community engagement and communication, so last time, uh, we had our last school committee meeting, we were kind of in the middle of our open houses and pin nights. So how did the rest of those events go? Any feedback from them, thoughts?
I did the middle school ones, I did Blake, um, I think that because there's three different pin nights at Blake, and I felt like there was a lot of parents who had already seen our table at the other schools, that we were the only people who had a table at like seventh grade pin night, or sixth grade, I was at, I was at seventh grade pin night. Right, there was like the, no one else came, so like it wasn't like CPAC and, and PTO, which I thought, like, um, Dale was so important, like, to be there, I just think we could reconsider potentially being at the middle school ones, because I felt like I stood there the whole time and no one. I talked to people about other stuff, but not that, because I think everyone was like, oh, I already saw you like at the other schools, and, and because the other tables weren't there, it was actually a little odd, I felt.
Yeah, okay.
So just something to consider for, like, the middle school, not that I don't think the information's important or even to have it out, but maybe not have a whole table.
Okay.
Uh, I had, uh, I think Tim was, you were eighth grade.
I was eighth, uh, I think I was eighth grade, yeah, you were eighth grade.
Yeah, I did seventh.
I did sixth. I was next to CPAC, but I was there early, um, and I focused on handing out information sheets on the project.
Okay.
That's what I did primarily, uh, and I did get a good number of people that.
That's why I needed more copies.
Right.
And I was sixth grade, so.
Yes, no one, no one wanted copies.
Well, no, sixth grade, well, yeah, but the other reason too, I was, cause, cause I was, um, that was, if they were new parents, that was the first time they were hearing that, so they were showing up. So by seventh, eighth grade, those numbers were going lower, and so.
Yes, that is true, I think there's a smaller turnout, especially at the beginning, I find seventh and eighth grade parents, sometimes.
Come later.
I apologize to now, but I think they skip his, they skip his presentation and show up for the teacher.
I'm assuming most of them had a sixth grader, that's why, I think you've seen it two times ago. I did, um, both, uh, high school and the middle school, I was late for the high school, apologize, not in the north end.
He was the north end.
But, um, I agree, um, really Diana, with what, what you said, that, that, I, I, you know, like, our presence is there to kind of see, but, but other tables were there, CPAC has spent a little time with theirs, some of the students, gosh, I learned about some club, I had no idea. Really was, was cool and, you know, but better, and it just being part of it, talking to the kids, it was more of a little more of, almost like a community setting for some of the folks in the school as well, so, you know, I, I gotta, you know, congratulations to Michelle for bringing us together to this new wave of.
Yes.
You know, getting going out, and I, I was late, but I thought it was, was actually, I was really glad.
And I, I think we should definitely do it at the elementary schools, and then, right, I think it was important to be there, I think we could reconsider for, like, maybe.
Has anyone, does anyone have updates from like, uh, their partner orgs from PTO, CPAC type stuff?
Not this week.
Not this week, okay, um, and then, do you wanna chat about Medfield Talks?
Sure. So, uh, Medfield Talks, we're gonna have our first event of the year on November nineteenth. It's actually gonna be at the Blake, um, middle school auditorium, because, um, it's tech week for the musical here, so we, we can definitely not use their space for that. Um, they're pretty busy that week, um, so we're gonna be over at Blake, and, uh, Dr. Jill Walsh will be there, I had a great conversation with her weeks ago, um, and she's gonna tailor it for all of our parents, not just, you know, geared toward elementary or secondary, but really work through the grade levels and, and gear it towards, you know, how, how you can support and how you can make that decision when your kids are younger, and then what you can do, especially when your kid's going off to college, and how you can support your child and give them some really good strategies prior to leaving when they're gonna have all that unstructured time and the phone in their hand, you know, which I think is a really good thing for everyone to, to talk about and, and make us, make a plan about. Um, so she's gonna be seven to nine, uh, she'll do a presentation, and then she'll, she'll do some, uh, Q and A with the folks that are here. Uh, emailed back and forth with her today, so we're just trying to finalize some of the, the final things, and, um, wanna thank the, the PTO of the high school is gonna be covering um, the cost for, they've, they've kept Medfield Talks line item in their budget ever since we started it, and then, once COVID hit, we stopped having it, but they kept it in there, so, um, they're gonna be doing that first one, so.
Sorry, I didn't write it down, what was the name?
Uh, November nineteenth.
Anything else on, um, communication or community engagement?
Oh, just, they had a really good, um, parent advisory yesterday.
Okay.
Um, so had it, um, you know, ten or eleven parents come and, uh, went through our strategic initiatives, um, and just tried to give them information on the start times and kinda get feedback from them and see what they thought about it, were pretty positive, uh, I think one concern was the, the timing with elementary, uh, but I think everyone else was really positive about everything, uh, so, it's a really good group, as you know, I know some of you, most of you come at least once a year, so uh, yesterday was a really good meeting, our next one's, uh, November thirteen, so it's good.
Anything else? Okay, next up, uh, Tim, do you have any update on the policy?
No, I think, um, one, I think last time I was, uh, I wasn't sure, but the policy manual is up online, it's, uh, the only downside right now, it is all the current material, but it's not, uh, doesn't have the auto navigation, it thinks that, uh, it will once it's posted through MASC. I think they're also suffering from a, you know, a little bit of delay, probably their conference is so important.
Right, that's fair.
That's probably what's, what's bogging them down.
Right.
And, uh, just one comment, and, and I'll share, um, for Andrea, um, so many little things go into this, I have a funny feeling, I see it just for the policy manual, where Andrea really kept it, um, kept a boat of, you know, floating for us, but just little things, I noticed last time, there's, like, what the MASC gave us was section A table of content, section A, then all of there, and Andrea took the extra time to, like, putting those together, so it's more usable even for that two-month period. Um, and, you know, thank you, there, there's lots of those little things, this is a bigger project than expected. So, we're excited to get it out, it's, when we'll come through the table of contents, and then we'll see, it's, most important, take this off the agenda.
Um, okay, and then.
Sorry, I should've thanked my buddy.
Tim, do you wanna, uh, walk us through the goals?
Yeah, sure. And I, even, I guess it doesn't matter, but if, I can't share, if you can share on Zoom. But it doesn't matter, so, and, and it gets up, in our packets, hopefully everybody, so what I was gonna do was, um, last year, we, um, put together school committee goals. Uh, we posted them, I think it was October, give or take, last year. So first, I was gonna just talk through, we have, uh, narrative for each part of the goals, I won't read it directly, I'll just kind of share the highlights. And then, uh, the second part of this is, I have the twenty-four and twenty-five goals, and that's, um, so we'll go through that second, so both of those are in the packet if you want. And as far as the, um, how we did against our goals last year, you know, the strategic, obviously, we wanna support, um, the strategic plan in everything we do. We actually really do, I think we came up with a process where Dr. Marston presented, what are the, um, areas of the strategic plan that the schools are gonna be focused on? In this case, for year twenty-three, twenty-four, and, uh, we absolutely, uh, worked really hard. One, I think, some of our, our, our off-site meetings in June, I think that's where there is some collaboration between school committee and Dr. Marston as to what do you think are the priorities, so, so, you know, there, there's a lot of collaboration that goes into that. We, we did approve the strategic plan, and we were thrilled to see that it was integrated in the schools over and over, I'd see posters, I'd see different things along that, along those lines. Uh, we worked really hard, uh, with Dr. Marston, uh, on a dashboard, I'd heard when I was, uh, last time, like, hey, we wanna make sure we monitor how are the schools doing. So we do have a dashboard that's up, continuing to be updated, I found it really helpful, in a couple minutes, we'll talk about goals for next year. Going back and forth, and I'm looking at that, so, um, you know, we were, we were pleased around that. Bringing the policy manual online, we, we, we were successful with that, we just talked about that. Relative to community engagement, I think, um, you know, we, we ran the office hours, that Will, you and I were in one of them. The office hours were valuable when we had people showing up, uh, and attending, but we weren't getting a great deal of attendance, so I think, you know, it was a great, you know, um, decision we made in the June offsite, to continue to go where the, um, you know, where the community is, where the school community is. So, uh, you know, what we did, we did execute the office hours, as, as we said, we learned from it, I think we're gonna be improving in that, so stay tuned for this year's strategic targets. I think each member did attend, hopefully, you know, hopefully it was double-digit events that we were at during the year. But some new ideas always come to mind, like going to events, which was fantastic, and, um, you know, Michelle, you kinda led the charge with posting on social media, um, I don't know what your followers are.
Continuing to trend upwards.
A lot.
Yep.
Yeah, which, which is great, and, um, the other thing I think that was, was pretty exciting was, uh, seeing those posts are also now on the website.
Yeah.
As well, which is, which is, again, just shows good, um, good progression. And then the, I think the, uh, under priority four for finance facilities and personnel, one of the things that we said we wanted to do is, um, advance some of the Dale Street project, including participation in at least two public forums with the school building committee. Select Board and School Committee, focus on communicating progress, obtaining community input, and advancing the project. That's one area that we, we did not do, um, conduct at least two public forums, I think one thing that I learned is, as we go through that, it, it is, and it's, it's not pointing a finger, but it should really be driven by the SBC, um, where we participate, um, in lieu of a public forum though, uh, we did have an agenda item in a select board meeting, where the school committee was there, the select board was there, the members of the SBC were there, and it was a really good meeting for us. Or for me personally, to kinda, um, I always hear your updates, it's really valuable, I, I attend meetings once in a while, but it would, that was a forcing function, I think, for the SBC in terms of where are we now, and, um, you know, so, while we didn't do the two, I think we, we made really, really good progress on that. And, uh, we did have an approved budget, which was one of our other, so, so those were, um, that's my commentary, I collaborated with Michelle, um, but if there's other comments that, you know, folks have, or, or discussion items on, on how we did last year, uh, you know, we welcome that, this is relatively new process for us, um, getting, getting a little more of a narrative, but if there's any comments that they'll be here, and, uh, they say sometimes it works, if there's no comments, that's okay.
No, good, okay, on to the next doc.
So then, yeah, the second part was, um, looking at our, our goals for this year, and I think one thing, just for the guidelines, I'm not reading them all, cause we, we have them, the guidelines we established. I think we just did add one thing, a, a more clarifying point that Michelle said, which our goals aren't intended, intended to be in addition to the duties of the school committee. So, um, again, the, the focus, and I actually even wrote that down, but, um, you know, we always wanna be complimenting the superintendent goals, we wanna be complimenting what's going on with the strategic plan, and that's day in and day out. But we, we do think there's some things that we say, hey, this is, these are things we really wanna pay attention to, or, or focus on. So, um, relative to the goals, I just changed the narrative a little bit, one thing is I was, uh, reading it. It just speaks again, we're supporting the strategic plan, and we're, we're definitely supporting, if this is an annual process, we wanna be supporting the focus areas that Dr. Marston showed, so, um, the only thing I would recommend is we just, I just switched the order on that, where it says, in this, it, it says, the school committee will also focus on goals with the strategic plan.
Okay.
Then, in the, um, safety, belonging, and well-being, we highlight the school start times, just cause of all the credible data around the, the value that, um, our students will, will gain from that, especially the, the older kids, so that's one we call out. Under community engagement and communication, so, here. But we, we, you know, attending the open houses and pin nights, um, we, we put that in, that was a, a nice change, um, but we wanna put that out there, we, we started talking about that in June. Ongoing support for the PTO meetings and, and CPAC right now, that, that we wanna absolutely call out, and, uh, Michelle, you, you talked about that. I, I, I actually eventually, I said, it, it's probably okay to continue to say each member will attend at least five school committee-related events.
What we talked about was, don't we all do that anyway?
I think, I think it's, I think it's fine to put it in there, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
I think it just shows commitment to.
Yes, right, like, but I feel like we're all doing it anyway.
Yeah, yes, we're all doing it, but I think it.
We're going to the musicals, we're going to our kids' band concerts and supporting.
Yes.
The other students there, um, I'm totally fine leaving it, I just didn't wanna, we all do it anyway.
No, you're good.
Yes, no, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, the only, cause I, I agreed with you first, and the, the only thing is, I think sometimes it's like, that's what gets you thinking a little different. You know, like, maybe it's an event you wouldn't always, always, so, so there, there's no, I don't think there's reason for a lot of discussion on that. I think a really big one, and it was a very hot topic in our, our June retreat, was the, uh, Mobile Technology Task Force. And, uh, you know, continuing to collaborate with Dr. Marston, he established that, and, um, I actually spent a little more time, Leo, at one point, I think, between you or, or Dr. Marston, like, looking at what we're trying to do. You know, I, there's a lot we could be doing, and I, I just thought it was, I, I tried to keep our terms consistent with Dr. Marston, which I'll, I'll call out, cause I think it's worth conversation, but with the impact of, of cell phone, social media, on the well-being of students, the impact of cell phones and social media on teaching and learning, um, support and. support and education for families, and the recommendation for policy and or handbook changes. So we absolutely want to support that. My own opinion, and I would just say is that we might see this, this might go beyond here. That's a really, really big topic. And then in priority number four, continuing to support the Dale Street Project, we just use something similar, but including participation in a joint meeting with the school, SBC, Select Board and School Committee, focused on communicating progress. You know, maybe if we did two meetings, we'd do, right, at least one. And we want to ideally collaborate and continue to work with the town, the warrant committee, the administration to get a acceptance of our budget. So that's proposed. You know, again, feedback's welcome. Again, we don't have to be officially vote.
Last year we didn't, we kind of talked about them and kind of agreed together that this is what we've worked towards, but we never took a form, we never formalized a document or put together a formalized vote. We discussed the goals together and then said we would review them at the retreat in June, which we ended up, you know, talking so much about mobile devices that that kind of took the time away a little bit, which I think we all supported, because we feel very strongly about that. So that's kind of where, how we ended up here, talking about reviewing our goals from last year and discussing new goals for this year in the same conversation. Anything to add about the goals, anything I do want to update or change?
No, I just think having them as a, as a working document is good, I think formalizing a vote on them makes them unchangeable.
Yeah, that's fair.
And so, but I think having them as a consistency, you know, and you've mentioned two big items, I mean, start times and phones were two very big, takes other school committees a very long time and, you know, to do it well, to do it thoughtfully. And again, you know, this, the start time thing is, as I know, we're not the first through the wall, you know, as Dr. Marsden said, however, it is still a large change. It can upset a lot of apple curts in the community, so, so things like that, I think are very important. Take their time, and so I think those were two goals that we got through, you know, and, and again, something else may creep up. And it may be the building related, hopefully.
Right.
So for the mobile piece then, I know we had talked about sending an email to get people on the task force, what's the timeline for that?
Yeah, so we're looking at doing that the end of next week.
Okay.
Then, one of the things that Tim had mentioned when we met was looking at Dr. Jill Walsh's presentation to be almost simultaneously with the kickoff of this group, you know, kind of a nice timing. So hopefully do that before, you know, probably like mid-November. And then she would be there on the nineteenth, and then we can just kind of get some momentum going, she's gonna consult with us too, and help us out with this, because she does that with a lot of districts, and a lot of private schools as well. That's kind of my thought there.
And you wanted two school committee members on it?
Yes, please.
You guys want to talk about who would want to be on it with Dr. Marsden and the unnamed individuals from our community? You want to decide tonight, or?
Yeah, my, the only, I don't know if we want to just, that falls off, the school committee goals, right now, like they were closing out the goals.
Right, but the mobile phones is underneath one of our goals, so if we all agreed that those were the goals, then I thought we could just chat about that right now, so we can continue to move forward on that goal.
I, I mean, I can do it, I feel very strongly about it, but I also have, right, a very like set view of what I, right? So I'd be happy to be on it, but I'd also be happy if someone else wants to be on it and then I can be informed.
I'm happy to stay on it, before doing that right now.
I, I want to be on it. I think that's a topic we all.
Care about, but I'm, I'm happy to let other people be on that committee.
I don't, I don't have to be on it, but I'm happy to do it.
I, I'm passionate about it, particularly around the impact of AI on it. I do have, you know, personal experience in the AI space, you know, and development and what goes into that. I'm just, I'm very curious into the feedback and connection as well, so, but like I said, I just.
You know, why is it when we like brought together a policy committee, we weren't all like, yeah.
I wonder why.
One of the things for these goals too, like, and I think I mentioned this to you, Michelle, but I can't remember, so I know we have some bullet points under here, like the impact of cell phones on wellbeing of students, teaching and learning, support and education for families, like, do we add like support and education for teachers, or do we add some, some bullet around, like, what is the mandate to teachers too?
Yeah, that's fair, that's a good question.
How even they're using cell phones, or what support they might need in addition to what support families may need, if we wanted to add a vote there.
I think we could do that.
Yeah, because I, I actually, this is an interesting, I'm glad we were, you say there, as I was writing this up, and then I was looking, because we, we had a couple workshops with Dr. Marsden during the summer on this topic. Originally, we were talking about the policy.
Yep.
And I, then I started getting into more detail within our goals. And I said, part of me said, that's the, that's why we have the task force.
Yes.
Right, I, I do think it might be worthwhile, whether it's through Chair or maybe Dr. Marsden, they would call directly. When you think about the scope that you're gonna be announcing, I think that's worthwhile that we share that, like, because I, I agree that the scope of that really could be wide.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I think that, that is important.
I think AI needs to be a part of it, AI definitely has to be a part of that. It's not explicit here, but it should be.
Yeah, so that.
That's something we're working on.
How would it, so just, just to back that up, like, so how is AI part of the conversation about how much usage of cell phones we use in school? Because I would think AI needs to be a discussion point, that that's how you're using it in doing your assignments, or how teachers are doing it interns, like curriculum versus like, to me, this is about a mobile technology task force, like actually like trying to limit personal devices, so I guess.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would just say that, that kids and adults use AI in their personal devices, I mean, that's, I guess, I would come back with, but I see your point.
You're, you're a part of it already.
Yes, no, no, I know that, but I just think if, like, when I think of AI, there is a conversation we had, how are we gonna use AI in curriculum, or how are we gonna use AI in like students using it? But, you know, I, I look at these as two separate.
No, I see your point.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I don't need to be on this in particular, I'll, I'll withdraw my initial and my others.
So Tim and Will.
Wait, on this one?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'll let, you could.
Tim and Will?
Wait. I nominate Tim Knight.
Wait a second, you're the one, you're the one that's like the expert.
I know, that's why, that's why I'm.
Actually, before you even vote on it, like, my thought would be, we have a.
We don't need to decide right now, as you're saying.
No, we can do it right now, but Leo, I think you're the guy that.
Well, like I said, I'm concerned about time, too, because I'm on SBC as well.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
As much as I'm passionate about it, I think.
I'm very passionate about it, but I don't know.
And she's very passionate, I have other.
Right, so you can, right, but you can.
I'll eavesdrop on it.
So it sounds like if we think about all of the different facets here, everyone cares deeply about this subject, which I think is amazing, and I'm glad we're all united in that front. If we look at who could probably be our representative, representation on this, it sounds to me like Tim and Will might make the most sense right now? Yeah, does that sound?
I'm down, I have the time to do it, I just don't want to kick the expert.
You can, you can consult, we can consult with outside.
I just have a lot of experience with it, but that's the, I just think, I think it's better for parental perspective, I'll go lane two technical, and I, like, time commitment for me is one of my concerns. So, like I said, I, I think between, if it is, if Dr. Marsden really would like to kick this off with the folks for that nineteenth meeting, I think giving him the power with people, representation here to assemble those people, so they know on the nineteenth that they're involved, I think might be beneficial. Because then they're going in with a different mindset to listen, I think it might be helpful, I, Dr. Marsden, I don't want to be.
No, that's fine, I'm just, I mean, the parents are gonna be chosen by the school committee reps, so whoever that works, you guys can.
I mean, it's just, that's just over a month.
Yeah, that's, that's plenty of time.
We, I think, the other thing I would say is, Diana, you proved it with the school start times, we were a pretty fluid group. I was, I was planning on going, I missed the first, I was gonna miss the second.
Exactly, then I took your spot.
We kicked him off.
Yeah, this one goes.
Exactly.
I'll nominate Diana to be, to represent the school committee on this, for the vote.
No, we're nominating Tim and Will.
No, okay, I'm just saying.
Oh, I was like, no, 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 I, I'm okay.
Oh, okay.
But if for some reason, Tim can no longer commit, I will be happy to be considered.
Hey, maybe you need some policies done, calling the big guy.
All right, we've lost.
I blocked, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so I think we were saying.
I'll nominate Will Horn to be the representative.
And Tim Knight.
Tim and Will, you guys are good, yes, we'll go with that, okay. We're gonna close the goals conversation for now, move on to informational items. Dr. Marsden?
Now, Madam Chair, in your, in your materials, you have just the update from tech and the update from accept, those are the quarterly updates that they send us, so just take a look if you get a chance and ask me any questions about it, if anything comes up, but they just, we just started doing this a couple of years ago, so both executive directors have been sending it out to all superintendents, so they could share with their committees.
And the MASC conference is coming up as well, I don't know if anybody registered. I am.
I can't go, because I'm, I'm out of, I'm out of town.
And usually you're registered when you show up, ideally we would register.
Yeah.
I think they, I think they appreciate people registering in in advance, so they can plan for how many chairs they have.
So I'm gonna go this year. I think, I believe I registered, I'm not.
Andrew, no, that was, yeah.
And welcome to Maeve, Maeve, do you have anything you want to share at the end of your first meeting?
What did I get myself into?
Yeah, pretty much.
Maeve was usually much more organized than this, I swear.
All right, so future agenda items, we'll be discussing the principal's open report from the middle and high school at our next meeting. We will officially vote on the school start times.
Yes.
Make sure you talk to people if they have concerns, help them out. And then our next meeting will be November eighteenth. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
The move?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.